Okay, I'm going to call the order to the special board meeting on March 24th, 2021 at Hubble Middle School. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. I will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the Republic, allegiance stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Okay, a few comments before we get into our meeting tonight. After our March 10th meeting, the district sought input from both parents and staff on potential, potential adjustments to our middle school and elementary school in-person learning options. In the process, we knew that we would have people on all sides express concerns about the adjusted, adjustment schedules. This has occurred throughout the year. Every pivot has brought forward new voices and revealed new concerns and opinions about what they felt would be the best or a better solution. We thank the people who have shared their feedback to us via email. We've read your feedback and understand where you are coming from. Tonight, at this special meeting, in response to feedback received, we will hear the recommendation from Dr. Schuler and his team for proposed changes to the middle school and elementary school in-person learning model that would take place around mid-April. We recognize that another change places a new burden on parents, teachers, and staff. We recognize that each change complicates schedules and routine, and routines. We also know that getting one step closer to the traditional learning schedule for students is absolutely essential and will help everyone be better positioned for a successful transition into the next school year. Finally, we have three board members that were not able to make tonight's special meeting. Later on, I will share some statements that I have solicited from them in advance of tonight's meeting from Mrs. Erickson, Mr. Matheson, and Mr. Hanlon. Actually, I think I'm going to have the other three board members here read those statements. I will pass those out to you as we get those, as we get to that point in the agenda. First, we have public comments. We do have two people sign up for public comment. And as I've read the entire time during this pandemic, we continue to temporarily amend our public comment procedures for this meeting to allow comments to be made in person or emailed to the board and acknowledged in the meeting tonight. As for the past eight months, this board meeting is available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. We also made an overflow room available if needed here tonight at Hubble. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment in person have the opportunity to do so. A sign-up sheet was made available at the entrance to the building until 7:00 PM tonight. As we have a couple people signed up, as with all comments, please be aware that it's the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is here to listen. Lack of action or a direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per board policy, we've allocated 30 minutes for public comments. With two people, we won't meet that allocated time. So to preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the stability and decorum of the meeting, please be respectful to the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name and whether you are resident of the district or your relation to the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mrs. Crabtree will time the comments and raise her hand when the three-minute mark is up, at which time we ask you to wrap up your comments. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to the members of the board or staff. We have, as I mentioned, we have two people signed up. First is Chuck Corbett.
Hello. My name is Chuck Corbett. I'm a first-grade teacher at Johnson Elementary and the vice president of the WWA Early Childhood and Elementary Levels. I'd like to thank the board and the district leadership for following the safety guidelines this year. I'd like to thank the middle school and high school teachers who have continued to teach through those pivots and adaptive pauses, and to the elementary and early childhood teachers of both in-person and virtual academy that have continued to teach without any interruption since September 1st. We've had an elementary plan this year that most, if not all, districts across Illinois would envy that goes nine to one since 9-1 without a pause and which has been invaluable to many of our students. And what's, what must be understood is that change at this point in the year to a plan that is working so well does cause some frustration, but not frustration that our students will be back full-time, more so over the Herculean task that will be required to change everything for 40 days. This isn't just a flip-the-switch type of endeavor, but one that requires a lot of effort on all elementary staff and for 40 days. Part of the reason the elementary planning committee made up of administrators and teachers did not originally explore this full-day option was because of the arduous task of rescheduling, hiring disparity in schedules in VA and in-person, expected sub-sortages, and of course, the costly expenditures versus that 40 days left in the school year. But given all that, I'm here to ask for your help in making this a successful change for the final 40 days. The district still has three remote learning days left from ISBE and has said that one day will be used to help staff with this transition. I'm asking that the board and the administration consider using at least two of these days as we work to continue to meet the needs of our students. Whether they be back-to-back in one week or one each of the two weeks prior to starting, there's a legitimate need for this time so that new plan can be created and started with fidelity. It all starts with teachers having to create a new classroom schedule for their 40 days. As a first-grade teacher, it usually takes my students about a month to get into the routine of things. And by switching for the next 40 days, my students are going to have to learn a whole new routine. We have new hires or permanent substitutes who are going to be, never have taught art, music, and PE, and some will be teaching all of those at one time. And our veterans, PE, art, and music teachers, will not only need to help them, but set up their own schedules and routines as well. Our special ed teachers who work with those students who crave that consistency and routine the most must come up with new schedules, then meet with their coworkers to make sure they can coordinate schedules, and then yet another schedule for their teaching assistance. To do this will take more than just one day, and to be honest, it'll take more than two, but teachers will get it done because that's what we do. Now let me be clear, we all have the same goal. We want our kids back in school. Everyone knows that District 200 teachers have, can, and will do anything to meet the needs of our students. What I'm asking is that for this new plan to work for the remaining 40 days and to make it work with integrity, teachers need time to completely restructure that school day. So please consider the use of at least two of those remote days so that staff can have the proper time to prepare and make this new plan a success. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Bryce Cahn.
Good evening. Bryce Cahn, I'm the president of the Wheaton Warrenville Education Association. Tonight marks another step along the pathway back to a sense of normalcy. Our union has consistently worked side-by-side with the district for the common goal of bringing as many students as possible back into our buildings safely. This commitment will continue until we have all of our students back at school where they belong. This cooperative effort is possible because of the board's commitment to follow the guidance issued by IDPH, ISBE, and the CDC. This guidance hasn't always been helpful to us. Back in August, the guidance set us back and made it difficult for us to bring our six through 12 students back to school in person, and yet we still found a way to do in-person for elementary, early childhood, and our special education programs. Now, seven months later, we're on the other side of that changing guidance where a pathway now exists to bring students back into schools safely. But we're not out of the woods yet. We must all continue to follow the mitigation strategies to make sure that we can continue to open our school doors to more students. If we stop being diligent as a community, I'm concerned that we would need to revert back to a hybrid model again. We do not want that to happen. We all need to be aware that this is a possibility even as these plans are discussed here tonight. We know that our students do better socially and emotionally when they're at school with their peers. This is why it's important to keep looking for ways to get our students back inside of school buildings. But we must also remember that not everyone in our district, parent and educator alike, agrees with the plans that are being presented tonight. And while there are majorities that have indicated this preference, we need to make sure that those families and students that are not comfortable with these new plans are also supported as well. As exciting as it is to be discussing these plans tonight, we can't just flip a switch and have everything ready overnight. In many ways, we are planning for a second first day of school this year. As you consider these plans, I ask you to make sure that ample time is provided so proposed changes can be implemented both with fidelity and with the greatest opportunity for success. Which is why, as my colleague mentioned here just a second ago, we were provided these remote learning planning days by ISBE, and we held three back for this exact reason. So please consider using two of these days so teachers and administrators can work together to troubleshoot the issues that are undoubtedly going to come up. And additionally, it will provide everybody that opportunity to be as prepared as possible so that the plan can be implemented successfully. You've heard some ideas for elementary. For middle school, we could very easily convert the Wednesdays after spring break to remote planning days without a significant impact to the schedule that's already in place. This is going to be our first change for our elementary staff and students this entire school year. And I've honestly lost count of how many changes we've placed upon middle school staff and students. But this is a significant change, and we need that time to make sure it's successful. We've learned that nothing in this pandemic is static. And as much as we all want things to be constant, that's just not what this school year is. The stresses of these constant changes are challenging to manage for educators, even more so when you must also manage the impact that this has on our students. Our educators will do everything possible to provide a positive learning experience for our students, but we can't teach and work with our hair on fire 24 hours a day. Our members have been doing amazing work this entire year, and we need that time and opportunity to plan and problem-solve so we can support our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, community members not attending this meeting in person and who wanted to provide comments to the Board of Education had the opportunity to send an email to the board between the posting of this agenda and 5:00 PM today, March 24th. All board members receive and read these emails. To be acknowledged, emails were to clearly indicate in the subject line that the email was intended for acknowledgement of the March 24th Board of Education meeting. These emails are read and then documented in the Board Communications log. We did receive two emails that were... The first was by Beth and Jeff Rokel, or Rokel, Rookly, on March 24th today about in-person learning. And then the second was by Jennifer Lombardo Delume, also received today on in-person learning. Those were the comments we received. So those have been acknowledged. Now, we will turn to our singular agenda item tonight, which is an oral report presented by Dr. Schuler. It's the update on the Return to Learn work plan. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. And I want to thank the Board of Education for adding the meeting tonight as... meeting tonight, as was already shared. When we presented updates to our plan on March 10th at our last meeting, we did agree to set this meeting so that we had an opportunity to come back together after we had received feedback both from community and staff. And when I indicate or mention feedback from community and staff, that's come in a couple of forms. We obviously administered a survey to our community to capture their feedback and our staff on the options that were presented, and on an ongoing basis, we've continued to receive feedback and communication through direct emails to the board, through the work that our leadership teams have continued to do with our staff as we've continued to work through these. And again, I do want to thank everybody who's taken the opportunity to share their feedback, their thoughts with us. I can assure you that we have listened to all of the feedback. Certainly, when possible, we've attempted to answer or address questions that have been raised, and I think as Mr. Paulson mentioned in the introduction, the reality is that there continues to be and likely will continue to be just a variety of opinions and perspectives around the path forward. But I do want to affirm, and I think what I continue to appreciate, is that all of the feedback is geared toward the same ultimate goal of getting our students back into school on their regular schedule. And so we're here tonight to present an update or recommendation to the board after securing that feedback, and I just want to start... I want to start that, start the update tonight again with a set, a slide that we've used in a number of meetings this year, comes back to our foundational beliefs that have guided our plans since the beginning of the year. And again, we come back to this slide because these foundational beliefs or these foundational principles have continued to sit on top of or guide all of our efforts toward returning to schools this year. We absolutely believe it is imperative to make sure we protect the health and safety of our students and staff. Any plan that we have laid out has been laid out consistent with guidance and consistent with the protocols that are essential to protect the safety of students and staff. We believe that we can and should safely bring students and staff back into school, but we want to do that with plans that are going to allow us to continue on that path. I'll take both the board and community back to last major discussion that we had in, at the end of January and, or end of December into January. We indicated when we got students back into the hybrid plan at the time, we wanted to be able to sustain that model, and I say the same thing as we move forward tonight. What we transitioned to, we want to be a stable model that continues, obviously, through the balance of the year. We do want to make sure that the experience we provide for students, both inside of our school buildings and those that are still learning remotely, provides the appropriate rigor and educational experience. We know that re-establishing relationships is essential, and we know that we want to continue to establish or develop our plans consistent with state and local directives. And again, what we're going to focus on tonight in sharing the update to our plan and recommendation are some of the adjustments that have allowed us to find that path forward. So again, while we're talking about the balance of this year, I continue to just remind everybody within our community that as we plan forward to next year, we absolutely anticipate next year operating on a traditional school schedule. So we're talking about the balance of this year, but I think always important to anchor in our expectation and planning for the next school year. So again, just a quick recap on what changed that brought us to the March 10th meeting. CDC actually updated their guidance first. They issued what they called an operational strategy for school reopening. And our original presentation for March 10th was really anchored in that CDC document, but then, as the board will remember, really less than a day in front of the March 10th meeting, IDPH and ISBE issued revised guidance that made a significant shift, especially in the area of physical distancing and group size, that really allowed us to accelerate the planning that was already happening as a result of the CDC guidance. And I know the board has received some communication or question about kind of the timing of our shift back, and again, we have said from the start that we want to be able to operate consistent with the guidance, especially that ISBE and IDPH have provided, and really what they issued to us on March 9th allowed us to really accelerate that timeline of moving forward. I made mention at the last meeting of the ABC Science Report, which is out of Duke University, that also provided some updated information on physical distancing. A number of organizations have provided that guidance, and actually, since the March 9th presentation, CDC actually came back and again revised its guidance around physical distancing and really brought their guidance fully in line with what IDPH and ISBE were saying. So they had originally issued kind of a softening of that guidance, but have actually since come back and clarified that window is three to six feet for physical distancing. So again, what changed, as I mentioned? A new definition of physical distancing is now three to six feet as much as possible, and again, I mentioned that's confirmed by CDC. That definition of physical distancing applies to instructional situations when students are in our buildings with all other mitigations in place. Most important to that is face covering or mask. And so in both CDC/IDPH guidance, when students are in situations where they are without a mask, when they're eating, and they happen to be outside without a mask, the physical distancing standard of six feet still holds in those situations. But classroom situations, when all other mitigations are in play, the standard is now three to six feet. There are no more limits on capacity within a single space, so previously there were limits of 50. That helps us significantly when it does come to lunch and other gathering situations, and that as long as we can adhere to the six-foot distancing standard, there is no group size limitation within a space. And as I mentioned at last meeting, staff vaccination is not a prerequisite for the new guidelines, but it's certainly identified as an additional layer of mitigation. And just as a reminder to the board, we've completed our first-dose clinic of our vaccine clinic at Bauer. When we get back from spring break, we will run that clinic for four days the week after spring break, come into that following week, and we will be completely done with the second-dose clinic by the 14th of April in that week. The mitigations that remained unchanged in the IDPH and CDC guidelines, again, required universal masking, correct use of PPE, including the mask. We do still have to contact trace and quarantine. Students' quarantine is still required for that close contact, and that is still defined as six feet for cumulative 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. What you're going to hear a little bit later, as Mrs. Murphy goes through the middle school recommendation and plan, is we have developed with some support of teachers and some in our instructional technology department, some tools to assist with that, especially as we bring more students back into the building, but we do still have to contact trace. We continue to hope that this is an area that will continue to be looked at by IDPH, but as of now, that continues to be the close-contact definition. And so here's our update for tonight. As I mentioned, on March 10th, we presented options to the board. We released a survey on March 12th, that was that Friday, ran that survey for a week. As we mentioned in the board report that was with the packet for tonight, of the parents that responded to that survey, 86% of community members did in fact support the five-day-a-week plan for full-day learning. At the elementary level, 66% of parents supported the transition to the more traditional school day. 13% supported extending the day by the 30 minutes, and 21% of parents indicated they preferred to keep the day as it was right now. And so I think Mr. Paulson did a nice job at the end of our last meeting in indicating that we did that survey to get feedback. It was not a vote, and so we don't base the recommendation that we bring to you tonight based simply on a vote, but I think this input is critically important for our community. And as you look at that in combination with the guiding principles that have really always focused us on getting kids back into school, if we can do it safely and consistent with the guidance that's out there, we're going to continue to do that, and that really drives our recommendation tonight.
Got this on. There we go. All right, so starting with our elementary update, we are recommending a return to the more traditional school day, beginning April 15th. As a reminder for the Board of Education and our community, our elementary programs have been operating in-person since September 1st without a pause, and we've been operating nine-to-one daily. This would be an extension really to a more traditional school day. And what would be added into the more traditional school day for our students would be a daily PE block of 30 minutes, art once a week for 40 minutes, and music weekly for 30 minutes once a week. Additionally, our students would have lunch daily for 30 minutes, and then there would be an optional class recess if the classroom teacher chose to take advantage of that or if needed. We would also be expanding our before-and-after-school program hours, so to really meet the needs of the new time schedule. This would also bring about a slight change to our AM and PM kindergarten schedule, again, adjusting it and extending it for some time from 9:35 to 12:00. Right now, it runs 9:00 to 11:00 for the AM, and our PM kindergarten, 1:05 to 3:30. Right now, it runs 11:30 to 1:30. So those are the operational logistics and the things that are added into the in-person day. As we work towards this transition, a lot of key operational pieces coming into play. As I spoke a couple weeks to you all, one of the bigger pieces was staffing, right? About 17.5 PE, art, and music hires needed. We've been working to secure soft commitments on that, but obviously don't want to move ahead without, you know, prior to this, but working to finalize those PE, art, and music hires will certainly be a part of our work. We're also working to, we'll have to work to secure lunch supervision hires. I do anticipate, even though that we have a feel for folks that would be interested in doing this work, that our buildings will be still in need of supervisors. We'll be encouraging our principals to work with their PTAs, and if there's any parents or community members that are interested in serving in that capacity, we encourage you to also reach out to our principals. The PE, art, and music hires, I think it's important to note again, one key piece that has helped us, but it's just important to note, is that our buildings do have permanent guest teachers, people that they're comfortable with. Some of those people are very interested in taking on these roles of PE, art, and music as well, and in combination with some folks that could potentially be certified in these areas. Another big operational piece, as we transition to a full traditional day, is finalizing schedule adjustments. So this will be a schedule change for all students and staff, right? Albeit, we're adding in some really exciting things for our students, getting the opportunity to have specials, but it just does change what the day looks like, not only from implementing or integrating those specials into the day, also integrating a daily lunch period into the day, but then we have to keep in mind our students that receive intervention or special education services, their time of day when they are getting potentially their pull-out for intervention services or their push-in will change as well. As we've looked initially, though, at our services and intervention services that are being provided, while we anticipate the time of day being adjusted for the students, right now, we're not seeing a significant change to the service provider being changed, which is a good thing. In preparation for this work, especially operationally, anything that we do, we want to do well, right? We spent considerable amount of time this summer planning for the transition to in-person learning, and I believe we've done that successfully, again, going throughout the year, keeping our mitigations in place, and really providing a consistent in-person experience. This transition does come with some operational pieces that we believe will be good for kids, but that we want to be prepared for, specifically the lunch piece, transitioning to our specials, all the scheduling pieces, our teachers' planning, their schedules. And so we are recommending a remote planning day on April 14th. That would be the day before the 15th, where there would be no in-person student attendance, but it would allow us to adequately prepare for this transition.
On March 10th, we presented a plan for full in-person learning at the middle school level, and I'm here tonight to provide you updates to that plan. So the first update being, we do have an official start date for our students to return to full in-person learning at the middle school, and that would be April 12th. On March 10th, the board also heard some logistical or operational impact on our current plan that we needed to think through, and so I do have an update for those items for you this evening. So first and foremost, we did make a decision that we would continue to keep our passing periods at three minutes, and we are not recommending the use of lockers. We have secured the additional desks that are needed. We've reorganized the lunch period to accommodate both cohorts, and as Dr. Schuler mentioned, our team has worked to develop a digital tool that will support that contact tracing process. Our middle school teacher leadership team was instrumental in providing input to our technology instruction coordinator, Lee Cook, in designing that tool, which will be very useful for our administrative staff. We are also recommending that we utilize the, one of the ISBE remote planning days on April 7th. That is the final remote Wednesday before all students return, and so we're recommending that be a remote planning day for teachers to make those final preparations. So that would mean on that day, students would not be receiving, you know, assignments or meeting with their teachers remotely. With regards to remote learning, for our families that are interested in changing to a full remote option, they must notify the district by March 26th at noon. That's this Friday. Families will receive information this evening on how to request a change. Students will be, that are interested in being part of a remote option, will be moved to the virtual academy, and additional sections will be added to the virtual academy if that is needed. A part of that communication tonight does include specific information about the virtual academy to allow families to make that decision. Finally, we also have some updates for families with regards to live streaming. Live streaming was something that we implemented as a part of our hybrid model, and it was never intended to be a substitute for in-person learning. Because on April 12th, we no longer will be in our hybrid model, we'll be in a full in-person model, therefore, we're recommending a change to the use of live streaming, and we're recommending that we would be utilizing those live streaming supports to support our students for the following reasons that we've listed here. Students that have a documented positive COVID-19 test, students that are considered a close contact and are required to be on quarantine, or other medical circumstances that prevent a student from attending in-person learning three days or more. I'd also like to let the board know that included in your folders this evening is a document that we have put together that we are going to use as communication with families and staff regarding our procedures for live streaming moving forward. This was a document that was finalized actually as of today with our teacher leadership team. And so this provides more detailed information around the use of live, the live streaming support moving forward.
So human resources comes in on both proposals. One of the things we're working on right now is adjusting our guest rate, our guest-teacher rates to assure substitute coverage for the remainder of the school year for all three levels. We continue to onboard more guest teachers, permanent guest teachers, and of course, like Dr. Swaggy said, lunchroom supervisors. We're also processing additional teachers for the expanded elementary day. And then lastly, we're working on staffing any additional sections for middle school virtual academy if needed, and the HR department continues to work hard to make sure we're supporting and giving the needs that the middle school and elementary and high school need to be successful.
So really, in summary, as we shared with the community in an email on Friday, we do recommend, moving forward, with the options that the community supported, obviously in our survey, that would include the five-day-a-week plan. with the options that the community supported, obviously in our survey, that would include the five-day-a-week option at the middle school. That again, we're recommending we begin on April the 12th, on the April the 12th. And the expanded day at the elementary school that would begin on Thursday, April the 15th. We were intentional about staggering the start of those two models, I think for a couple of reasons. Again, as we've mentioned, what we do, we want to make absolutely certain that we do well. I think in every model that we brought to the board this year, and every model or opportunity we brought to the community this year, in our schools, I think we've taken the care and diligence to make sure that we've done things well. And I think that's why we've had the success we've had within our models. We certainly want to continue to do that. Also think at the elementary level that, starting midweek, giving students an opportunity to transition into that expanded day for a couple of days, and then have a weekend and an opportunity to gear back up. That's something candidly we used to do in our schedule at the beginning of the year quite a bit with students in our schedule, and I think makes a lot of sense in guiding that. Again, we have recommended the use of two remote planning days. That would be on Wednesday, April the 14th for the elementary, and Wednesday, April the 7th for the middle school. And again, for the middle school, that is already a day that students are not attending in person, but it would not be an asynchronous day, it would be a remote learning planning day. And again, that's to make absolutely certain that all logistics and plans are buttoned up for as students come back. As I mentioned at the onset, one of our guiding principles was not only to get to this point, but to make sure that we can sustain it. And so thus, I think the diligence in making sure that, obviously, we take the time to do this right. So we're pleased to bring this recommendation to the board tonight. I want to personally thank not only our leadership team that obviously has been a part of the planning, our teacher leaders that have been a part of our planning teams. It truly has taken a village, it's taken a community of learners to continue to help us navigate through this year. I don't take for a second lightly the reality of what this year of adjusted learning and experiences have brought both to our community and to our staff, but I'm pleased that we are at this point, and pleased that, really recognize April the 12th as the beginning of the fourth quarter of the school year, that as we hit April 12th in that fourth quarter, that we have arrived at this point. So with that, we'll take any questions from board members about our plans or our recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Schuler and team. Anybody want to volunteer to go first with questions or comments? Dave, you want to go for it?
The first question I have is these remote planning days, are they the same for both? That there's, is it a remote instruction?
So a remote planning day is not remote instruction? That means that teachers' focus for that day will be on the planning effort of preparing for this adjusted model? So it's just a non-attendance day for students?
So it's like an institute day?
Correct, correct.
Thank you. And then the schedule adjustments on the elementary side, who is doing that? I'm asking, it's a, I met with the teacher group a couple of weeks ago, and I was very encouraged by how positive they were. They were, one of the concerns was the scheduling adjustments, especially with the IEPs and so forth that you referred to. And a hope that this wasn't going to infringe on their spring break. And I know there's some in the community who won't think that teachers need a little bit of a break, but it's been a stressful year for them, and I, for one, support that. So, but that's the reason I'm asking that question.
Yeah, so specific to IEPs in special education, a lot of that work is teamwork, you know? Each student that has an IEP typically has a team that's working to service that student many times. So that work can lie in many different places. On the resource teacher, collaborating with specialists like the speech pathologist, social worker, occupational therapist, whoever may be helping to provide that service. Our school psychologists are involved in that. Many times from an oversight view, our special education directors are looking at all the pieces of that puzzle as well. And then our principals sometimes are involved in that. From an overall scheduling view piece, that's happening at the building level, right? From looking at how our specials are integrated, our principals have teams that they work with, and then obviously, working at revising and looking at different schedule pieces. But then, that also comes to our teachers, and it's our teachers then are reworking their schedule, right? And so there's pieces there that impact that. So, I mean, everybody has a hand in it, and there's responsibility that lies at every level. But certainly, our teachers are engaged in some pieces of that, a lot of pieces of that, especially when it comes down to the level of where they're working with kids. From a district perspective, I work on the special schedule, the art, the music, the PE pieces, making sure our allocations are clean and that they're going to the right places. So all different levels it's happening at, you know, all the way through the system.
Yep. So, and one of the things that gave me appreciation for there's a few more moving pieces than, you know, I even realized sitting on the board in terms of what that impact's going to be, you know, for them. Is that work substantially complete, or is there still a lot to do between now and?
I would say that work's ongoing, right? It starts with our principals building a master schedule, which is in process. And even if those master schedules are complete, many times, then they're working with teams, and maybe teams are coming back to our principals and looking at different pieces. Because even as you plan schedules, there may be conflicts then that have to be reworked. So I would say that that is a pretty fluid process, just when you consider all the, even considerations that I noted there. I failed to mention even our math and reading intervention, and some of those pieces being reworked, all have kind of a domino effect. So certainly, we're working through that process, but I would say it's ongoing, right? Because it's probably more of a feedback loop that changes and tweaks pieces.
And then the other question I have is about the, we're basically expanding two hours a day, right?
Yep.
And so we have an hour between PE and lunch.
Yep.
And then on two of the days, we have 30 or 40 minutes for specials. So that other hour, on the, you know, between a half hour and hour, is that just expanded times for some of the core curriculum?
Yeah, you know, when you kind of break it down, it, yeah, it falls between 30 to 45 minutes on average, that there could be more teacher-student contact time. And I think how that time is utilized, or what you gain from that time, is going to be dependent upon the age of the students. I think initially, as we move to a transition time for our younger students, a lot of that time's probably going to be, it's fair to say, utilized to transition our students to lunch, transition them to PE, you know, some of those other pieces. Our older students will probably adapt quicker, and transitions can happen quicker. But it's fair to say also that there is some additional teacher-student contact time gained in this. I would just say it's not fair to say that if we take all that time, that it's just instant time for our teachers with kids because there is a transition in some of those pieces. But I think as we move through it, you continue to gain more and more time because kids get adjusted to the new schedule. But that additional time would lie with teachers and kids, yes.
And then just one more question on elementary before I move to middle. The open positions, I mean, there's kind of two categories, right? Your PE, art, and music, and then the lunch. How many spots are we still looking to fill, and what are we going to do if we don't fill them?
Yeah, we feel pretty confident with our PE, lunch, and art pieces, right? Again, we have a strong pool of guest teachers that have proven themselves at our building and shown interest in a combination of teachers that have done work in this area. So we feel confident in finalizing those pieces after today, so we feel like we're in a really good place there. Our lunch supervision is coming to play too, but I do think that there will be still some openings, but not significant openings. One of the pieces, as we made this transition, or made this recommendation of a transition, is we do not have the full 30-minute recess that we traditionally had included in this day. We're given an optional class recess. That does help us with the supervision piece, because we're accountable just for supervising lunch, which while it is an important responsibility, when you add recess onto that, it adds significantly more hiring and significantly more supervision in that piece. From a management aspect, lunch is going to be an easier manage than lunch and recess together or just recess solely. So even as we seek to secure those, we'll have backup plans for, if we don't have a spot there, it may be the principal in there supervising it. There are different ways you can get at the lunch piece.
And then the people filling those roles, you know, we heard a lot during the winter, primarily when we were closed from the community, you know, of parents and community willing to step in and help. Are you seeing that with people backing that up by signing up to help for lunch?
Yeah, you know, we started with some original pieces to see who would be interested in it. I think as we now look at what are the open gaps that we'll have to fill, I think that we will be even stronger in our reach out to our PTAs. We've had some interest. I wouldn't say it's grand at this time, but I would say also on our end, we will continue that outreach and hope for more support in that area, especially in places where we don't have positions filled or even slots filled. We're going to be, we've been really strategic about, hey, it may just be a half hour here with this grade level, or an hour here. And partnering with our PTAs, Ms. Lakhno has great connections with our PTAs as well and our principals. So that process is starting, and they've been receptive.
Okay, thanks. I just have a couple of questions on the middle school. There was some correspondence about some of the lunch space and leaking in the hallways. And I know there was some communication that some of our facilities people were going to go take a look, and has that been revised or updated? And are we feeling good about that?
Yes, I'm actually looking at Mr. Robinson, because yes, we have evaluated all of our lunchroom spaces, and facilities went out to evaluate it as well.
Okay. And then, do we have any idea based on the survey what our expectations are for how many people might be choosing to go remote at our hybrid now? Or is that just, would be just a guess at this point?
I think it would be a guess at this point. Again, my sincere hope and what I have seen even in looking at some other communities around us that have navigated through similar transition is that largely those that have signed up in-person have remained in-person. I anticipate that some of our buildings, we need to have some conversations with parents to perhaps address some individual questions or comfort level. But I don't anticipate a major migration to virtual academy, but we'll have the space to accommodate if we need to.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Susan? By the way, for the rest of us, before we, if you could make sure we're talking to the microphone, step, and even my microphone now working, if we could make sure that people watching on YouTube can hear.
Yep. First of all, again, thank you for all this work to Dr. Schuler and the senior leadership team. It's kind of crazy to think that it's been a year now since this all started, and we've come so far, and we've learned so much. And yet, we still have a ways to go. And, you know, I think from the start, we've always said that our goal is to get our students back into the classroom. And, you know, I think that's what parents want, that's what teachers want. I don't think anybody questions that. And, you know, I think, you know, as we've seen in emails to the board, I think there's some thought that, from both sides, that we're getting pushed from all of different angles in a certain direction. And I think it's important to note that we have consistently followed health and safety guidelines. And at least for me, that is what has been, helped me frame what we're doing here in the decisions that have been made. And I think we have been consistent with that. And now that guidelines were updated again over the past few weeks, that we're adapting again, as we always have, as guidelines have changed. And it's no different than what we have done in the past. And I just want to acknowledge and express my appreciation for all the feedback that we've received from all of our parents and our staff, and that we do read them, and we hear you. And, you know, I appreciate the different points of view, and it does, for me, it helps me think through these decisions that we're making as a board. And, you know, and I read, as I've mentioned in a previous meeting, that I do read these studies, like I actually read the studies of, you know, of a lot of this work that has come out. And there is, there are, there's a lot of information now that shows that these mitigations work, that the distancing in a school environment with strict adherence to the mitigations, which we have consistently done, do provide a safe environment for our students and our staff. And it, you know, it's shown that spread does not happen in schools because, or very minimally because of these mitigations. But there is still spread in our youth, as we've seen, and I've seen, you know, very recent news articles over the past week that rates are starting to rise a little bit. And I just want to stress to our community that we've done a lot of work, we've adhered to these safety mitigations, and we're doing everything we can to provide a safe environment for education, for our students, and the best one that we can provide. But we still need our community's help to keep our kids in school, and to keep all of our students and our staff safe. I know the weather's changing, and we all desperately want to get back to some normal activities. I know I do. But I just please ask that we don't let our guards down quite yet, that we still have a ways to go here. And we're so close, we're so close to the end here. And, you know, I just please ask that, you know, we keep being vigilant as a community, and that will really help keep us, keep our kids in school. And as, you know, we've mentioned that, and I bring this up because of the contact tracing rules still in place of being within six feet, that that is something that we may see at our middle schools is higher numbers of quarantined kids. And I think if we can stay vigilant on the outside of school, we're going to keep that number under control. And so, you know, that's something that we, as a school board, can't control. And so I just please ask to keep that in mind to our community, that to help us, we've, we're pretty much there. Let, you know, please help us stay there. And then I just want to acknowledge our teachers, that as we once again ask you to change the teaching model and this Herculean leap that we're asking you to do. And, you know, and just say to our community again, that as we go through these changes at elementary and middle, that they're big changes again. And as Mr. Corbett said, that they'll do it, they always do. And it's been just amazing to watch. But I want to, you know, just make sure that our community offers patience and grace to our teachers and our buildings as we go through these changes over the next couple of weeks. And there's a lot of logistics, and I have full faith in our district that we can pull off all of these logistics and getting all these things into place. But again, I just, you know, things might not go as smoothly as we hope, and that's the nature of the beast. And just, you know, words of encouragement and offers to help will go so much further than words of frustration and anger. And so, you know, I just want to mention, you know, want to say that to our community, that we, our goal has always been the same, and, but we need your help to make this work. For, I think Dave actually asked several of the questions I had about, you know, teachers getting their, you know, getting their spring break. I think it's something that they have very much deserve right now. And the, for the specials and that we're having in, with the, us hiring possibly permanent subs and that kind of thing, is there? And this is my, this is in part my ignorance, because I am not a teacher. But although, because those are, you know, specialized classes of art and music, do, I guess where do those curriculums come from if they're, if that person is not a certified music or art teacher? person is not a certified music or art teacher that, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, no, great question. So just, just to bring us back to this, in the equation of those folks that had to be hired, I believe it was 15 or 16 of them were PE teachers. And then it's, it's an additional of a, of a part-time music and, and like, so in all of those instances though, so for the music and the art piece, we, we have two people that are, that are highly interested in that and I, and one of them even has, I believe, some certification in that piece. And our PE folks as well, we have some that have some of the certification, but then others that are permanent subs. But to allow for that transition, one, with an April 15th start date, we're actually planning on starting those folks coming in those positions on April 12th so that they can partner with the, with the person at their building. In the instance of the PE piece, there's already a standing PE teacher at that building.
Okay.
And in the instance of our music and art piece, we're partnering them with those teams which are much smaller. Across the elementary level, we have five or six music teachers, then I think maybe six, seven, eight art teachers. So they'll have a partner in that piece and some have a little bit more accountability as well. And then on the PM, they'll have a direct building person.
Yeah, okay, great. And let's see, I just wanna reiterate, cause I know I brought it up last time and I believe you addressed it, that, so you're feeling more comfortable about our students who have IUPs and their providers, that they'll
Yeah.
high in large be able to stay. I, I think the time change, like, you know, I, I think we can, that's, again, having a child who had three different services like that, that to me seems a little bit more doable than the provider change.
Yeah, as I alluded to before, the schedules are not completely finalized.
Right.
Right? Like that's, that's certainly work that's ongoing and that's gonna keep ongoing, especially in the special education world. But we're not seeing the significant change in provider as much as the schedule changes. Doesn't mean it still couldn't happen if it, if it did occur, I would, I would foresee it occurring in an instance where we're adding some time for a student on top and they're not completely losing somebody. But we're not seeing that on the whole, that kids are having providers changed, it's more just the time that's going to change in the structure of that, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is there gonna be any work with the teachers to, cause I think with our, with our little guys at the elementary level, that especially with our, with, you know, kindergarten and even first and second, but, you know, like the afternoon kindergarten, I think we got an email about this, you know, that, that's a big, you know, that's a bit of a time change. And then with our, with our maybe first and second graders with that day expanding and now they're eating lunch, like, is there gonna be some, I mean, I know we're going into spring break, but, you know, maybe the, that week when we come back, that some help either to parents or teachers, like to help prepare them for this change, you know, like, this is coming, this is, you know, what our day is gonna kinda look like, instead of just being like, and today we're a full day. Do you know what I mean? Like, is there gonna be something like that?
Yeah, I, I, from a district perspective, I don't know if we have plans around that, but I think, you know, as even alluded to before, I would see that as part of the preparing process and some of that really at the classroom and/or building level, about thinking through those transitions and the things that you wanna communicate to families about the transition, right?
Yeah.
So that's certainly a part of the, the work that goes into it that we've kinda, kinda talked through.
Yeah, I think just giving parents like maybe some talking points that they can talk to their kids about, like, you know, just preparing them for what that's gonna, that's going to look like in, in the future. And then just lastly, at middle school with the livestream portion, so I understand what's happening there, will it, for kids who are in quarantine, you know, or sick, will that livestream look different than what it is now? Like as far as, you know, I know the teacher is engaging with both there, or will it be that type of thing again, or is it more of the child, like just kinda watching the class? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, good question. We have certainly provided our middle school staff with flexibility on how to design that live streaming experience based on the objectives for the lesson of the day. So every day, I do believe it looks different in each teacher's classrooms, depending on what they're working on. So we have had conversations that that flexibility would continue, but we've also had conversations where staff have said, you know, I might want to just meet with a student one-on-one instead of them just watching.
Right.
So I think our staff is really thinking about that critically and always thinking first about how is it that they can best support that student and also the consideration that I now have many more students in front of me.
Right, yeah, and I guess that's my question, is that it looks different, I suppose it's gonna be, depend on if you've got six kids in quarantine versus one, maybe, or some, you know, it might be, just like you said, it might be easier to meet with that one student one-on-one kinda thing.
Right, and these are things our staff is certainly thinking about. We also have to remember, it's gonna change day-to-day who could be in that situation.
Yeah.
Where right now, our teachers are putting lesson plans together knowing a static group that is going to be sitting on the
Yeah.
screen on Tuesdays and Fridays and Mondays and Thursdays. But this is gonna be a bit different because it could change day-to-day. And so they're certainly thinking about that now and having conversations about it, but they certainly want the flexibility to continue to think about it from the lesson objective and how they can best meet their students' needs. And that was something that I certainly heard loud and clear from the teacher group today, that they, they really wanna think about it so they can best support the students in front of them, but also know that they need to support the kids that will be at home.
Right, right, okay. And then if a class doesn't have anybody in that situation, you know, sick or in quarantine, I think what we're saying is that that livestream is turned off for that class. And so I just wanna, okay. And I know that this communication that will go out to parents, you know, states clearly, I like this communication, by the way, that states clearly of what are the reasons you can livestream and what are not, basically. And so I, I think that will be good, that, that looks good. Let's see, I'm sorry, going back to elementary, I apologize, I missed a note here. For, so now that we're going to in-person extending that day, how does that look from, with the Virtual Academy, cause, I'm sorry, cause that, sorry, that that day is staying the same as far as time, correct? And, and then, but our in-person day is expanding, is there, I miss, but they're still equitable as far as core teaching minutes and that kinda thing? Like I guess that could be a question I could see coming.
Yeah, great question. I think it's first important to recognize there are differences between an expanded in-person traditional day and a Virtual Academy, right?
Yeah.
They're different models even in how minutes are delivered between synchronous and asynchronous pieces. One of the pieces that we're looking at expanding or offering an expansion to for the Virtual Academy is that in our in-person experience, we will offer or bring back some opportunity for our fourth and fifth graders to have some PACE ELA, if you remember.
Oh, yeah.
We're looking at how we can offer that towards the end of the day as an option, if kids wanna take advantage of that in the Virtual Academy as well. That's one of the offerings that came back with this. But as far as for the Virtual Academy, one piece that's been key, if you remember, we have service providers serving both the Virtual Academy and the in-person experience. We're really holding to keeping our schedules structured to, at the Virtual Academy for intervention purposes, for our special education students, all those different pieces. And our in-person folks are working around those schedules as they create them. So are we expanding the Virtual Academy day? We, we don't have plans to do that, but we also recognize that, that there are different models, that there's more screen time involved for kids, that the way the kids are working are both on their own independently through asynchronous stuff and some direct synchronous stuff. So with the exception of the one piece I mentioned around PACE that we're exploring and, and will be reaching out to some of our families in the VA in that regard, we don't have plans to change the structure of the Virtual Academy day.
Okay. And then at the last question for the middle school, kinda around Virtual Academy too, is that, we're obviously, you know, we're at, we're gonna, wrong one, that we're allowing middle school parents to choose to put their child into a remote learning session. I guess that my question, when I realize it's kind of a, maybe not relevant question, that it would, could it go the other way? But Virtual Academy at middle school is a separate school and that wouldn't really work right now, correct?
Correct. Yeah, and so we are not anticipating opening up a return from Virtual Academy back in when, when families selected Virtual Academy. We ask for that commitment for the semester.
Semester, yep, okay, yeah, sorry, that answer came to me as I was asking the question, I apologize. Okay, I think that is it, thank you.
Okay, a lot of stuff to process here. Two things that I can't change, I've been an elementary school teacher and I sat on the building scheduling team. So I have those built into my head and, you know, I, I believe, I can't remember if it was Chuck or Bryce, that, that talked about that, we're really facing a second first day. And I really empathize with our, with our teachers for that. Our elementary teachers, you know, I, it takes a couple of weeks before you're really back into a full day and, and kids building up their stamina and all of that. And so a couple of questions I'm gonna start with there. With elementary, I know that we've been purposeful recently in past years of X amount of minutes and, and really sticking to very kind of rigid schedules in some respects. Are we going to allow teachers more flexibility, especially in those first couple of weeks? Maybe it's more independent reading time, maybe it's more, so it's not the, the really rigorous, you know, we can ease kids a little bit back into that.
Yeah, so just to clarify, you're, when you're talking about previous years and being rigid in our schedules, are you referring to like core instructional minutes?
Yes.
And how those are broken out?
Yes, yes.
In, in light of like a reading framework or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I absolutely would say that we would see the role from, from the administration and even the, the building leadership team model would be to create, make sure that people have conditions to be successful, right? Here's a schedule, this is where your specials fall. Obviously, we've gotta have some core blocks aligned, how the teacher utilizes those minutes and how the teacher goes about delivering that instruction. I absolutely believe that there should be and will be flexibility and autonomy, right? They, our teachers have already created good core academic routines, they'll still have those blocks alive in their schedule, albeit at different times of the day. Those times are not increasing significantly, so while they will change the time of the day, our teachers, we want them to have autonomy with how that flows and, and really just build upon the structures they've already built with their kids.
Can you describe what elementary lunch is gonna look like? Are they eating in a lunchroom, multipurpose room, classroom?
Yeah, the majority of our students will be eating in, in our multipurpose rooms or our caf, or gyms, six feet apart. Some might be at lunch tables, some may be at desks or tables like this. We do have some instances where kids are gonna be eating in classrooms and we'll have supervisors going into the classrooms. A few instances where teachers are wanting that for their kids as well. But for the majority of, of our schools, you're gonna see lunch taking place in some of the larger venue areas with kids spaced apart, typically by grade level, within a space, but ensuring that they're six feet apart and spaced out.
For our kindergarten students, because that seems to be the day that is, the time of day that's impacted the most, you know, especially our afternoon kindergarten that was going 11:30 to 1:30 and now is going 1:05 to 3:30. What are, are we doing anything for families that, what if they can't do that? What if they can't adjust to the change? Are we allowing them a, a Virtual Academy position? Or I would hate to see kindergarten students that can't come to school now because we've made a change because it just doesn't work in a family schedule? Are we working with, I don't know, maybe a provider or something that can help with that time? Cause that's, I mean, that's a really big time change.
Yeah, that, that is a shift in the time piece, so I will tell you, if there are individual circumstances where that comes up, we will absolutely work with the family to provide the opportunity that they need throughout the day, whether it's at the beginning, the end of the day, a transition back, offering best at the end of the day, any of those pieces. We recognize that. A core reason for that shift is, is the variable of transportation and how that shifts our AM day, with, with the AM kindergarten and then the time, not being able to push up the PM kindergarten day because we go till noon, you don't have any time to push up earlier before a 1 o'clock, 1:05 start as we bust to the, to the end of the day. But certainly, we recognize that in any individual situations that are brought to us, we'll work with those families.
So, so lunch is going to be staggered, am I understanding that correctly? Whereas it might not be staggered right now in a building, it's going to be like every half hour, there's a different lunch period?
It could be dependent upon space, you know, some, some buildings have multiple spaces that they're operating around, so they may be able to have less staggering. It's fair to say that you're gonna have multiple lunch periods, but at some buildings, they may need four to six of them over a half hour period where other buildings with a smaller population may be able to fit a grade level or two in a space and operate their lunch periods between 11:30 to 1:00, while a larger building may have to operate lunch 11:00 to 2:00 because of more of it or, or more students and less space. So you're gonna see a little bit of variability in there, but the general idea is you're gonna have some staggering and it's all about space and time and how that fits in there.
So I guess in my mind, I was originally thinking the PE period was the other half, so, but it's not. Now PE is gonna be all day long.
That's correct.
Okay, so that was a, that was just a misunderstanding.
PE will be built daily for 30 minutes each time, so you're only dealing with the 30 minutes of lunch solely, you know, when, when it comes to lunch, not the hour block of lunch and recess.
You know, I, I wanna talk about the remote days. So do remote days impact the end of the school year if we use them? Now, I know both Chuck and Bryce spoke about looking, asking for two. And I know that when we ask for another one, we're putting a stress on families, that it's a, another day that they need to figure out. But is there, does it make sense to have a second one even a week or so into the program to make sure that things are running smoothly? And, and, you know, I, I guess it's, you know, there are going to be glitches. I, I've been there at beginning of school years, every single year. There are going to be things that we have to rethink and re-shift and, and do all of that. I don't know if we need that fail-safe, you know, that extra day to just say, let's see what's, let's regroup, what's working, what's not working? Cause I'd rather adjust then and there than get to a point where we have bigger problems down the road and we have to stop. So it's something I just wanna throw, I wanna throw out there, especially because if it's something too that our, you know, I look at our elementary teachers that have been in school since day one without a pause, if they really feel they need this, can we accommodate that? They really feel they need this, cause they've really been there, you know, we're, we're only two school districts in DuPage County that have been able to do this and our teachers have done that. And if it's something that's really important that they feel, I, I kinda feel like maybe we should be thinking about that. Middle school.
Chris, do you wanna, how do you wanna process that though right now? So it sounds like maybe an adjustment to...
I mean, is that, is that even open for discussion, I guess?
Sure, I mean, it's...
Is what I'm saying.
I agree with you on that as well.
I, I just feel like, I want us to do this, I want us to do it right, I want us to be able to stay in. Should we be proactive in that? And if it's something that our staff is feeling like they really need this to be successful, I guess I'd rather us look at that now than run into some stumbling box down the road that, you know, like, whoa, we gotta regroup, lunch is, lunch just isn't working the way we thought it was, or, or that, we could react faster.
So I guess I'm gonna just share two things, right? I can only make a recommendation to you, if the four of you collectively want to make a different decision, right? You can, you can do that. I, I want you to recognize throughout this year, we've brought a lot of plans to the board, right? We brought a lot of models to the board and we've been able to do everything that we have brought to you. I feel confident in that. I feel confident in saying to you that I think as we navigate into this new plan, if we see a need to recalibrate, to take a day and recalibrate a couple of weeks in, I think we have the, the capacity. I think we have the capacity to do that, but I think we've brought to you what we think in, certainly in working with. So there are a lot of sources of input I respect greatly, obviously, the input that you heard from some of the teacher representatives tonight, but also recognize that we've worked closely with our building principals that regularly plan for the beginning of the year. Obviously, you know, Chris and his teams, I feel like the day is adequate, the day as a remote planning day. So we're also not asking for that day as an asynchronous day where teachers are providing, you know, instructional work in advance or during that day. It is a day specifically devoted to that planning piece that I think is adequate. But again, collectively as a board, if the four of you feel different, that's up to you. We can do whatever you ask us to do.
Let me finish with my questions and process.
Before we go further, I want to ask a follow-up question to that, then we can come back to it if needed. But we have April 7th for middle school, April 14th for elementary school. Is there a reason we can't do both days for both? Thus giving each level two remote planning days, but not, it's not one or the other on those two days? Is that a different way to do it and still hold a third day out there if needed?
Yeah, so I guess the question, can you do it? Sure.
Okay, so do we think there would be value in doing that for both our middle school and elementary school teachers?
Yeah, I guess I'll bring you back to the recommendation that I brought to you tonight. So if you believe, obviously based on the feedback that's come to you tonight, collectively as a board, you want to dedicate both of those days to remote days, if you have the ability to make that decision.
Can I, let me just finish asking the rest of my questions, maybe Brad can ask his questions and then maybe we can come back and talk about that. So for middle school, help me with the live streaming. So I'm thinking, what if we have one student? That student is then somewhat called out as having either quarantine, COVID, like, are we saying, you know what I'm saying, like if there's like five kids at home, it's, might be a little different. It could be something else that's going on and, you know, but I don't know, I guess I just feel like, what if there's just one student, that student is the only sole person sitting on a live stream situation?
I think, Chris, the effort is going to be to avoid that, right? You know, I guess, again, I think Melissa answered this earlier by saying, every situation is going to be somewhat unique at a particular building. I am 100% confident in both our building leaders and that our middle schools recognize we have three counselors at each of our middle schools assigned to a grade level that I think can help us to determine the best way to support the student. We have the equipment to be able to livestream, but we also know, you know, come back to any school year, non-pandemic school year, we support students who are absent from school, right? If they're absent and they're out for a window of time, there are other ways to support students in keeping up on work besides livestream as well. So that might be honestly something that's somewhat situational based on kind of student and building, but the effort is going to be to make sure we support students instructionally while they're not able to attend class, but we're going to do that in the way that I think is, respects the privacy of students and obviously the situation that's at play.
And I had the opportunity to walk through Edison a couple of weeks ago and it just was an amazing feat to see our teachers concurrent teaching. Like that is not an easy, an easy task for them to do. And, you know, we've been, we've been asking a lot of them. And, you know, just the engagement and seeing the kids engaged, you know, as we walked through the rooms, I actually walked over to each computer station and saw the students that were interacting as well, sometimes on louds, you know, on speakers in the classroom and, you know, they were carrying on conversations with the kids that were there. So it's, it is a big, it is a big task and ask of them. Also, let me just see here, I want to make sure I've asked everything that I...
I just want to add in, this year, because we've been utilizing Google Classroom and more technology with one-to-one, our students are even better supported without live streaming because they can receive their assignments instantaneously, which is really a difference from pre-pandemic days. So I think that's something to celebrate as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. I want to be respectful of our staff too that maybe hasn't been fully vaccinated yet by these openings and, you know, now with more students in the classroom and, you know, just being sure that, you know, I, you know, I noted in some of the correspondence that we've received from middle school staff, even just the setting up of their classrooms in terms of help for them. Are we supplying help or, you know, like that would be something I guess would be done on that, on that remote day, but, you know, it's going to be new X's on the floors. I mean, if you walk into those classrooms and it's, chairs have to, you know, there's spots for everything to be. Are our teachers doing that? Are we giving them help toward that?
I mean, they're certainly using that day to set up their classroom and then our custodial staff and facility staff will be providing support as well.
I mean, I think we need to be thinking of that on that day as well. So it's, we're asking them to plan for new ways of teaching as well as physically setting up their classrooms as well. So that's why I'm going back to that, is that one day, is that one day enough? I just want to be, you know, what we've asked of them this year, I think has been a lot. And if it's something that we think would really make a difference, I would, you know, like to at least just throw it out there as an offer, you know, as an idea. I think that's everything that I just want to... Oh, back to elementary, I'm sorry. For BASS, are we opening that up for new families that maybe now this day has shifted in the way that they've had childcare needs, that new families can enter BASS?
Yeah, situationally, I mean, one of the things we've had to be conscious of is our staffing compared to student ratios this year more than ever because of spacing and mitigation pieces. But certainly, if there are new families that want to enroll, we'll entertain that, but we're still going to be conscious to make sure we have adequate staff to support some of those pieces, right? So, yes.
I think that's all my questions.
Okay. So I'm going to, I guess I guess have some questions and comments kind of peripheral. We spent a lot of time on the nuances of the day, I want to kind of get kind of at a higher level and talk about some things that got to these discussions or these recommendations. Can you talk a little bit about the survey results we've received and the kind of the data cleaning process that we had to go through to make sure there were no duplicate entries and how we want about that?
Sure, so Julie Osimakowski managed the data on the surveys. So she actually ran like two checks on each of the survey pieces to make sure, A, that there were no duplicate entries and two, to ensure that every student number, AO number, was a valid student or AO number. So there were kind of two points of check to make sure that it was a valid data submission and those that were not were pulled out of the...
So we did run into some data duplication?
A few, I will say not, like, not an inordinate number. I don't want to suggest that like there was a massive effort to skew the data pool, but we did run into some.
Okay. And then can you talk about the value of these changes, not only for this year, but going into next school year and why we think this is such a valuable opportunity, even if it's only for the fourth quarter?
Yeah, so a couple of things I think about. One, when we met with the Citizens Advisory Committee last week and ran through some of the questions, even some of the questions that were being asked tonight, right? There were questions about lunch and our ability to execute safety protocols at lunch and what we were able to draw from in answering the question is the fact that we've done it, right? We've done it at our middle and high school programs that have been working through those procedures, albeit with a different age of students, but have been doing it for 10 weeks, 12 weeks, right? So we started the presentation with our expectation and our goal for the start of next year and I think that it's critically important that we navigate to that place so that we know we can confidently continue to build on and execute into next year. I just, I certainly have heard lots of feedback around like the timing and for how much time do you have to have left in the year for the change to be worth it? I certainly think there's enough time left in this year, but candidly, even if it were for the last six weeks of the school year, from my vantage point, I would still tell you, I think it is worth it to navigate kids back to that kind of normal schedule experiences. I think that'll, that'll build with great confidence as we go into next year. And the last piece that I'll say around that is that we will still have 20% of our students at the middle and elementary school that are learning remotely and we anticipate welcoming the students back into the building in the fall. And I think one way that we do that and do that confidently is also to be able to show our ability to run that program safely. So those are just a couple of the thoughts that come to mind on, I think, the, you know, the value in navigating there toward the end of the year beyond obviously what it does for kids, right? We know that that experience is good and productive for kids in terms of academically, socially, emotionally, what they're going to get out of the expanded day.
Okay. And then I guess at the middle school level, I guess this question is really more of a communication question. So I read that we're going to push a message out tonight and ask for a response by noon on Friday. You know, I want to make sure that that's just not an email, that maybe we follow up in the morning with a phone call. We all know how, you know, it's easy to miss an email for a few days or two weeks. But I just worry that, you know, we're going to send this email out tonight and somebody's going to miss their opportunity because they just didn't get to it and it's a really tight timeframe. So I just want to double communicate, make sure that we, everybody knows they have this choice, because it's a big choice.
We actually, we have our middle school principal meetings on Wednesdays and we talked about that at our meeting today and shared that the district would be communicating out this evening. But that middle school, we encourage middle school principals to follow up multiple times and we do plan to have a phone message go out on Thursday night as well.
Thursday night feels late to me, is there a reason why we couldn't do that Thursday morning? Is it in addition to the email?
I hesitate on pushing out midday mass notifications to parents because it can, when, if you get a call midday from your child's school, it can be alarming and I don't want to startle people. We are looking to schedule something around the 5 o'clock, 5:30 timeframe. So we usually, when we do schedule phone calls to go out, we find that an effective time because it's not during the dinner, it's shortly before the dinner hour. So hopefully families haven't put their phones away to have dinner. So that's typically a timeframe that we've seen successfully.
Yeah, I just want, I'm just super sensitive to somebody missing an email and losing that opportunity. So that, I just want to reinforce that perspective.
Absolutely, and our middle schools, we've asked our, both our schools and then our schools to ask their PTAs to help make sure to share that on social media, that families check their email for that link so they can complete that form.
And then kind of a follow-up to that, at the middle schools, this separate sheet that we have with the live streaming procedures. And I think these two list at the bottom about what the acceptable reasons to attend virtually and the not acceptable reasons is super important. I mean, this is almost like getting into what we got ourselves, the schools got into at the high school level. We want to make sure that, you know, people clearly understand this is not an opportunity to sleep in or, you know, decide not to go to school that day just because they can livestream. So that's kind of the second piece of my middle school communication question. Elementary school, can you explain the reasoning by, to push back the start of the day from 9 o'clock to 9:35 and how that ties in to changes we're making elsewhere?
Yeah, a couple of variables that play into that. So first of all, if you extend to a fuller traditional day, I think it's good to start by explaining how the end of the day has impacted. We are held to the earliest we could end a school day being 3:30 because our middle school day is done at 3 o'clock. So the soonest our buses can get to our elementary schools is at 3:30. So then you look at, okay, well, why can't we start at 9:15, 9:10, like 9:15 like we used to? The piece that we took out of the recommendation and the transition to the full traditional day is that 30-minute recess block that was accompanied right next to the lunch block. The reason we took that out is, is that from a staffing perspective, we felt that to transition to this reasonably and effectively, from a staffing perspective and an operational perspective, this gave us that ability to do that and make the traditional recommendation a reality. But essentially, you lose some minutes there then because those minutes are not covered by our certified teachers and classroom teachers, but they're covered by supervisors. Essentially, taking that out cuts about in half what we would have to bring onboard in supervisors from a number around 90, 95 down to in the 40s. So certainly, if there was an opportunity to make that day, you're looking at a six-hour day right now. If we could go 9 to 3, I think that we, that would be a recommendation on the table. We just cannot because our buses run at each level being a unit district.
Do we have the same transportation issue at the start of the day? Middle school drop off and then elementary school drop off?
Yeah, so middle, you got a little bit more flexibility at the start of the day. So middle schools dropping at 8, they can certainly get to our buildings by the 9 o'clock time or even earlier, right? But if we start earlier, then we've got to end earlier and we can't end earlier because...
So there's a lot of logic behind that.
Absolutely, yeah, certainly.
And then I guess now that we're in the spring, are we going to bring back the tents and the ever-popular show-your-smile break?
Yeah, yeah, so certainly we can bring back our tents. And then as you look at mask breaks throughout the day, first of all, recognize kids will have a daily 30-minute PE. So that's an opportunity, not only to have structured PE, but also just some time to integrate and move around and if they're six feet apart outside, they can have their masks off at some time as well. Lunch will certainly be a time for that mask break. But has teachers looked at how their day is structured, right? And how PE lunch is there? I am certain that the majority will also be working in mask breaks as well as a possible recess or something accompanying that. So yeah, I think it's an opportunity to bring show-your-smile breaks back.
Okay.
Or keep them going, they've been going throughout the years, so.
Okay. And then I guess my last, I guess, comment about elementary schools, you know, the one thing that's kind of resonated with me the last couple of meetings is the specialists, we've talked about students with IP's. And, you know, the thing that I recall was just how those specialists work with both elementary and Virtual Academy. And so I just want to make sure we don't have the impression we're leaving VA behind, the teachers and the staff as we are so excited about, you know, changing the in-person model. But, you know, the Virtual Academy programs are equally important in terms of staffing and rigor and all that stuff. We just, I don't want to lose any focus on that. I know we all feel the same way, I just felt like I need to say that. And then, and then finally, kind of similar but kind of off-subject, can you, high school? I know we, in the last meeting, we talked about, you know, trying to bring more students back to in-person as we could adjust. Can you kind of review some of the changes in the numbers and how the percentages have balanced out at the high school level?
You're up to about 30% of your high school students that are four-day-a-week. 40% are still full remote and then 40% are on the two-day-a-week hybrid plan.
Okay, so it's a, it's a almost pretty level blend between the three models, okay? But we've been able to increase that four-day-a-week in-person number based on the work that the schools have done at the high school level to target, okay? So I guess that covers my questions. Do we want to kind of come back to the remote planning days? I mean, so that, you've made a, the administration's made a recommendation for the two days, April 7th for middle school, April 14th for elementary. I threw out the idea of, oh, you know, we've always, as a board, we've always supported the recommendation. I want to make sure that what... I want to make sure that whatever we do has the highest chance of success. So, you know, I'm open to any kind of follow-up conversation on that.
Brad, did you say you had things we're supposed to read though from the other board members? Do we want to do that? Is that?
Uh, we could, we could, we could do that. So, um, I did reach out to, um, Jenna Erickson, Jim Matheson and Rob Hanlon and wanted their, them to weigh in on the recommendations that we've seen. So I, I reached out to them individually to, to provide some of their, their thoughts and opinions. And so if it's okay right now, you know, I'd like to pass out their statements for the individual board members to read. I, I often feel like I talk the most here and I thought it'd be nice to get a, a different voice. So what I'm going to do is, um, pass out, I'm going to pass out Rob Hanlon's statement to Chris. I'm going to take Jenna's statement and bring it over to Susan and then, and then Jim, Jim Matheson's statement over to, to Dave Long so you can read that and just kind of read it into the, formally read it into the record what their thoughts and opinions were with the recommendation and then we can come back. Does that work?
I just thought we'd get it all, everybody's comments together then. You want me to start? Okay, so I'm reading from Rob Hanlon. "After reviewing the return-to-learn work plan, we have been executing, visiting schools and hearing feedback from teachers and community. I am supportive and aligned to the plan presented tonight on the return to learn. I appreciate some are not aligned to the plan details and have sent some feedback to the board. After considering feedback, I believe the plan presented continues to keep our district within the guidelines presented by the CDC and DuPage County Health Department, offer a virtual choice for full-time learning, contains a plan for students in quarantine, carefully balance keeping students in school long-term while optimizing space utilization-aligned mitigations, expand opportunities for traditional in-class learning experiences and activities. In addition, the plan sets the district up for success by providing an eight to 10-week period this year for teachers to transition back to an experience that we can expect in the fall, provides additional information and concrete examples for those families considering a return to school in the fall. I appreciate the work that teachers, administrators and staff have contributed to the return-to-learn work plan and support the decision."
Thank you. So that was a comment from Mr. Hanlon. Dave, do you want to read Jim Matheson's feedback?
While I have been away the past several meetings, I have been paying close attention during the meetings and staying in touch with Brad Paulson and Dr. Schuler as needed. I have had opportunities to weigh in directly when I felt it was important. As we have moved through the school year, I have been thankful to have such a committed, flexible and caring leadership team guiding our district through every challenge and over every hurdle along the way. I recognize that shortly before our March tenth board meeting, we received updated guidance from ISBE and IDPH which made expanding our in-person learning model more attainable. I appreciate the quick turnaround to propose adjusted plans and seed feed, and seek feedback from our parent community and staff which resulted in the updated recommendations presented tonight. I am confident we are considering all the feedback and hearing all the concerns. I provide my full support to the recommendations being made tonight as we take another step to a more traditional, in-person learning experience for our students. I'm proud of how well the administration, our staff and our community has dealt with the COVID challenges that we have confronted this year. The students, their parents and the community should appreciate how well this district has responded to the crisis. I look forward to participating in our next meeting on April fourteenth."
Okay, thank you. And again, that was from Jim Matheson. And Susan, you want to read Mrs. Erickson's comments?
So this is the statement from Jenna Erickson. "I am sincerely sorry that I am unable to attend this evening's board meeting. I am currently in St. Paul, Minnesota, where I have been quarantining in anticipation of the arrival of my first grandchild. My husband and I sold our home in Wheaton and are residing in temporary housing through the end of my school board term this spring, when we will move to St. Paul to be closer to this grandchild and three of our four children. I remain fully committed to the work of this board and will be watching the live stream of this meeting this evening. As do all my board colleagues, I continue to read all of the messages received from parents, teachers and community members concerning ongoing reopening plans. I would like to go on record as fully supporting the recommendations that will be presented by the District 200 Administration tonight. I appreciate all of the feedback concerning such issues as safety, logistics and yet more changes to our learning models. As has been the case since early in the pandemic, I remain confident that our planning teams are making constant changes as additional challenges are identified. I do not want to minimize the heroic efforts that we have been asking of our teachers and the flexibility we have required of our parents and students for the past 12 months. But I believe that it is our duty to provide an in-person learning environment to our students to the extent we, that we are able to do so, following the guidance of our state and local health professionals. Our successes so far this school year are the basis for my trust in these new plans. I commend our administrative team and our district staff for the solution-focused mindset that has allowed us to keep moving forward in the best interests of our students."
Okay. Thank you for, each of you for reading those statements. I, I just felt it was important to, for the, the, everybody in the community and inside the district to see that even though the three of them were not able to make it to, for tonight's meeting, they've been following along and, and weighed in on the recommendations tonight. Um, so I guess we'll, look, before we kind of go back to the, the, well, we should probably do the remote planning day. So Chris, I mean, I'm going to look to you, but what, what do you think?
I, I, I mean, I, I brought it up as, something as I'm processing all of these changes and like I said before, I can't take the fact I was an elementary teacher out of me. You know, I, I, so I, I understand what we're asking of teachers. I know that the scheduling of all of this is, is very great. We heard two of our teacher leaders speak tonight saying that they needed this. So I guess I just wanted a discussion to be able to, you know, if it's something that people need and feel it will be very beneficial, I'm just throwing it out there as a consideration. Um, whether it's done right at the beginning, whether we want to have, I know, Dr. Schuler, you had mentioned even if it's something we need, we can add it. Like, 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 do we want to be proactive on it? Do we want to be reactive on it? I, I don't know. I don't know what the, the right answer is there, but I just wanted to put it, I just wanted to put it out there as I sat and listened to everybody talk tonight. Those things were spinning in my head.
Yep. And I, I agree with you. I, this evening, I'm just, I'm looking at the calendar here and I'm wondering, um, you know, I, I of course, I always support the recommendation of the administration and I still do that. And I'm wondering though, if we, again, it's an idea, if we, we keep the decision as recommended with a middle school on the seventh, elementary on the fourteenth, we have a board meeting on the fourteenth of April. And I'm wondering if, again, I mean, it goes back to, is it proactive or, or is it later? Is it something we can discuss at that time and have feedback from maybe our, our, you know, our leadership or the elementary and middle school to see, do we need another one? What you said initially to kind of, within, you know, a couple of weeks to sort of course correct some things that maybe didn't go quite according to plan. That's sort of like a, we will, you know, it's not off the table, but it's just, again, it's just an idea. But I, I don't think that's a bad idea either to, on the seventh and the fourteenth to have it at both levels.
Dave, any thoughts?
Yep. First, thanks, Chris, for, um, bringing it up because I, um, think it's important. The, I guess where I'm struggling a little bit is, is it a, and this is with all due respect to the teachers and to, to the people who spoke tonight, but is it a nice to have or is it a must-have? Um, you know, that's what I was trying to get a handle on. Is all this going to impact their spring breaks or are they going to get to enjoy their spring breaks? If, if it's not impacting their spring breaks, I might lean towards, um, no. If, you know, if people are going to have to be spending a bunch of hours on their spring breaks working on planning and so forth that they otherwise would do, I might be more inclined. Um, I also want to recognize if we do that, if we do add that day, it's really taking a student learning day away. And so I think that's important. And then, um, um, you know, the, the thought you threw out about doing them both, I, I thought it was intentionally done on separate days. And I don't know if that's for administrative support from the district office, you know, the middle school and, and elementary. Um, and then again, relying on, you know, I mean, uh, on the recommendation that was given to us, if, um, you know, I, I kind of almost prefer to leave it to them to say, all right, to come back to us, like Susan suggested, maybe on the fourteenth. If that's too late, then, then maybe we, you know, I don't, I don't know what else the alternatives, but I, um, I'm open to it. I just don't know that we, I go back to that simple saying, is it a, a nice to have or a must-have?
So where my mind is, is this a, you know, we, the board doesn't get involved in kind of the day-to-day operational decisions. That's not our responsibility. That's Dr. Schuler and his team's responsibility. And this feels like we're crossing, crossing into that a little bit. Um, the team's made a strong recommendation, what they feel is appropriate. We've heard from our teacher leaders. Um, I don't, I don't know that the three of, the four of us are really the experts in this. Maybe Chris is, but, you know, this is not our position. You know, I, I guess if I had to make a request is, can we, can we leave April fourteenth as an option for middle school teachers to come back as a remote planning day? Should we, should we get into the first, uh, few days of this and realize we've got to, it's, it's maybe not working as we hoped or we've uncovered some things that we still need to work through? Just leave that as an option and let, let you work through that for, for a second day for the middle schools. And then if we get into the, you know, the first full week of elementary school, the week of, uh, the, what, fifteenth, sixteenth, seven, the week of the nineteenth and decide that, hey, we need another day for the elementarys, just leave that as an option for you. You know, I, I want to support the recommendation, but I want to be flexible to whatever we might uncover during the first couple of days at, at each level. So, um, I would support, personally, I would support what the recommendation is, but ask that we're flexible, that if we uncover things that the teachers feel like they continue to need to work through, let's, let's give them the option and come back. If we need to make that decision on April fourteenth, when we have a board meeting, then so be it. That's kind of where, where my head is right now. But this is not really a decision of, you know, the school board. We, we approve the calendar, but this is, you know, a little bit more nuanced than the, the calendar at the start of every year. So I guess that's kind of my, my recommendation based on all the feedback I've heard is see how it goes, given the recommendation, but be very flexible. Should we need to continue to tweak the, the teachers and the schools tell us they need to tweak some plans, have that flexibility should we need it. That's why we left these three days left out to begin with. So let's maybe leave one more and continue to, continue to adjust and tweak should we get to that point. How does that sound?
I mean, I think, I, I think that what, as, as, you know, as Brad said, we, I think what we want to let you know is, or at least what I'm trying to let you know is, as a board member, if you guys need that day, take the day. Like, like, you know, like, if you feel like you need it, you know, or, were you coming, you know, are you coming to us on a more conservative, we're trying to save those days for down the road or, or, you know?
No, I'm not. So again, I, I just want to really, really clear, kind of with all due respect for all of this conversation, I, I, I'm not trying to be conservative in this. I bring to you, I thought, a plan that, uh, makes sense, I guess. Uh, I want to make sure we don't leave this conversation though with any lack of clarity for our community, that idea of like leaving a day out there as a maybe we'll call an audible as we get close to it. I would not suggest that. I would suggest that, um, to, to kind of what you've suggested, uh, less plan on the, the remote planning days we've already identified, April seventh for the middle school, the fourteenth for the elementary school. We do have a meeting on the fourteenth. We'll be two days into the middle school plan and certainly can give you a status report on where we are a couple of days in. Um, I, I do tend to agree that, uh, I'm not sure we're going to, we're going to know everything that we need at the onset. And so, you know, let's talk about it on the fourteenth. And if we determine that we will need another remote planning day, I think we can talk about it, uh, on the, the fourteenth. But I just don't, I, I would be anxious about sort of leaving
Yeah.
some, some ambiguity out there for the community. I think we need to give them clear direction tonight as to the two days that, well, not two days, it's one day that middle school will not be attending, the one day that elementary in-person will not be attending. And then, um, I, I'm confident this is not our last update on reopening plans, even though we anticipate, uh, this being the last major adjustment till the end of the year. Um, we, we still have that ability if we need to, to kind of recalibrate for a day.
And be flexible if we're having some stumbling blocks or, or that, that's, okay.
And, and I think what I would say to you is that if you feel like you need that adjustment, you know, I don't know that you need to ask us for approval, which is team's responsibility.
We're supportive of that.
Yes. No, I understand. And we've always felt that. Look, I, I want to be, again, crystal clear that the, the decision or the recommendation brought to you tonight is not like in, in isolation of not considering the potential impact and value of, of that day, right? Like we, we get that there is a reality that we need to have the appropriate amount of time to make sure that buildings are prepared and ready. Yet I think as Dave recognized, we get the reality that for each remote learning planning day, right? That's a day that kids are not in school and that has an impact, uh, on our community, both in terms of learning time and just that impact on families. So we're cognizant of both of those. And, and I, and I guess I would just tell you that, um, if we absolutely need the time, we, we will, we will bring the, the request to you for the time, but let's plan on an update on the fourteenth.
Okay. Uh, so, you know, we've heard from, uh, Mr. Matheson, Mr. Hanlon and Mrs. Erickson, just kind of around the table here, board. Chris?
Yes.
On board with the recommendation and a great discussion we had tonight. Great discussion, I thought. Asked some really good questions and some good answers too. Susan?
Yes, I support. The plan is presented.
Dave?
I support it too. And I also just want to, again, thank everybody for all the work. I, as I usually do, I neglected to say that at the beginning of my remarks because I was focused on what I wanted to say, but I do appreciate, um, all the work and flexibility and so thank you guys.
And, and I, I endorse it as well. I, I appreciate and recognize both the challenge and the opportunity we have ahead of us right now. And, and I, I try to focus on that we're going to get a lot of good stuff out of this. It's going to translate not only into this year, but also into next year. And it's going to be, it's going to be overall beneficial for our students hopefully. So that's where we want to head. And so I think Dr. Schuler and team, you have the full support of the board to move forward with these plans. And, uh, let's go. And let's get the communication out, uh, about these overall plans to the community before spring break. Okay. Um, there being no further action to come to the board in an open session, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Booten. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.